Correct, excuse me, there we go, just making sure.
It's recorded.
Sorry.
May I speak now, Mr. Cannelan?
Yes, I apologize, I was just trying to make sure.
I accept your apology, I accept it. I'm going to begin the meeting and I'm going to ask the students to start us. Colleen, you have the flag?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. You could all stand for the pledge.
The United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Clark, I'm going to call on you for a moment.
Yes. I'd like to be asked for a moment of silence for John Formeister, who was age 73 and he died on October 17th. He was the head custodian at DePaulo for 23 years. And when I was a parent, a PTO parent at South End, we had to move our Halloween party to DePaulo for many years due to the large number of attendees that we had. And Jack, who I always referred to as Grumpy Jack, was wonderfully accommodating to the South End families, always staying to make sure that we had everything we needed and never complaining when we put things back in the wrong place, which we always did. He epitomized the wonderful community spirit we have here in Southington and especially Board of Ed employees. He went above and beyond, especially for the kids. Jack leaves a wife, three children, and three grandchildren. Rest in peace, Grumpy Jack.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our October 8th, 2020 meeting, please?
Don't move. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next on our agenda is our presentation this evening, so welcome. And your name is?
My name is Christine McNelly and I'm with Raptor Technologies.
Christine, I don't know if Mr. Cannelan's got his hand up, so.
I can do a little preamble, if you will. Sure, we talked about this particular item last year and the board chose to move funds from funding this particular item to another area of the operating budget as the budget was adopted. At that point in time, we talked about having someone from Raptor Technologies come in and speak with the board and do a presentation, and then we were a bit derailed, shall we say, with regard to that because we ended up all at home for most of the time, and so we didn't move in that direction. Since that time, we've had Ms. McNelly come back and she recently, about a month ago or so, I think Christine, right, did a presentation to our school safety and security committee, our inter-agency committee, which you know is comprised of not only school personnel but command staff for Southington Police Department, Southington Fire Department, Public Health Emergency Management Services, and our partners and collaborators from the YMCA who run our before and after-school programs. So as a result of that meeting, we then thought it would be a good idea to do a presentation for the board so that you could have some firsthand information and be able to ask questions, et cetera. So Christine, I'm going to turn that over to you.
Great, I'll share my screen, how long do I have? I don't want to take up too much of you, I know you guys.
You've got about five minutes.
I was like, oh my god.
I will give you six, Christine.
I think the presentation and the Q and A that you did to the school safety committee was, I think it was a total of about 45 minutes.
Yeah, and I can make it shorter. Sorry, I mean, I don't have to keep that long. I'll go over, I have a kind of condensed version, I don't want to bore you guys, but let me share my screen. Okay, can you guys see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. All right, well, thank you so much for coming and thank you for allotting me some time at your meeting. I know we have a lot of important things to get to, so I won't be long. So just to start with a little background about Raptor, if you guys aren't very familiar, our mission is very simple, is to protect every child, every school, every day, and we really pride ourselves on being a school safety partner as opposed to just a vendor. This slide shows what we call our Raptor fundamentals and as you can see, focus on customer success is number one because that's what's most important to us and that is why we have a 98.9% retention rate and we're really, really proud of that, we know that your success is our success. This is just a heat map of where we are in the country, Texas is where our company is located, so you can see it's pretty heavily populated, but all over the East Coast we have a lot of clients. And more specific to you guys, we have over 320 schools in Connecticut and just in Connecticut, we have issued over 2,000 sex offender alerts and over 2,000 custom alerts. And just some larger districts in Connecticut that are using Raptor, Hartford, Danbury, Norwalk, Bristol, West Hartford, New Britain, and Stratford. We are the only company in our space that utilizes the full enterprise class software process, everything from product management and development to cloud operations and security, client services and support. And most important to most school district is IT security best practices. You can sleep well at night knowing your data is very safe with Raptor because we have all of these protections. And then lastly, it's our history of innovation, you're never going to have to leave Raptor and go with a company that is more technologically advanced or in tune to your school's issues. We only start the K-12 market, so we're constantly learning from our customers what they need to secure their schools and we adapt our software to their needs. Our Raptor visitor management suite consists of visitor management, which I'm going to show you guys tonight, volunteer management, which is a whole end-to-end solution with volunteer management, and emergency management, which is drill management, accountability, and parent-student reunification. So later down the line, if you guys are interested in any of the other two pieces, we can revisit those. So let's just take a look at visitor management, these are the things I just want to point out before we get into the actual software. Every time a visitor comes into one of your buildings, we do an instant sex offender screening. We also have a custom database that all of your visitors are screened against. The custom database can be anything, anyone that you don't want into your buildings, but usually it's custody issues. So you always have accurate visitor records when a visitor came in, when they went out, and what they were doing. And we have full district ride reporting, so at district level, you can find out what's going on in every single one of your buildings. So before we go into the code response, I'm just going to pop out of here and go right into the Raptor system. So this is where your Raptor administrator would spend about 95% of their time. Raptor is completely web-based, just going to plug in my camera so I can show you my equipment. Let me show you my. So this is the Raptor scanner, this is where your front-end user, your secretary, would put the visitor license and then this is the demo printer that prints out the badge. Okay, so the visitor management system consists of five modules, visitor, contractor, student, staff, and volunteer. Everything in Raptor is highly customizable, so if you guys decided you wanted to just use the visitor in the contractor module, we get rid of the other three. And as we go through the functionality, you'll see a lot of areas where it is highly customizable to your needs. Let's see, is that everything? Yeah, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you three examples of what it looks like when a visitor signs into your building, a first-time visitor that needs a government-issued ID, a return visitor that doesn't need an ID, and then a manual entry if they do not have a scannable ID. So let's say we have a first-time visitor going into your building and they hand their ID, their license, to your secretary. Your secretary will put it into the scanner, your secretary can put it into the scanner anyway, there's no wrong way to put the license in, they're going to click on scan ID and then the license is pulled into the scanner and there's lights blinking right now, so it's reading the information off 2D barcode on my license. It's retrieving the first name, last name, and date of birth and my license just popped back up and my information appears on the screen. So it captures my picture as well as my first name, last name, date of birth, and it's going to ask me where I'm headed in the building. Again, this list is totally customizable, so you can have any destinations you'd like and it can be customized to each building. Down here is where we have what we call a health check, this is new, this is some COVID functionality that we added since COVID. So these are all questions right out of the box from the CDC, but again, these can be customized, you can take some out, you can add some, but these are just, again, right from the CDC. So we're going to ask that visitor all these questions about their health and if we click on no to all of them and we're going to submit and print. So now we're checking all that information, the first name, last name, date of birth, against the sexual offender database and the custom database. And I passed both databases and I answered no to all the COVID questions, so my badge is printed. It says visitor, it's date and timestamped, it has my picture, it says where I'm going in the building and it has the name of the building. Okay, any questions about the first-time visitor? No, you guys are good? All right, so return visitor is very similar, but you only need to scan your license once because once you scan that license, we save that information in the cloud. So let's say I come back next week, I say my name is Christine McNelly, your secretary will put the name in the quick find, oops, I forgot to sign out. I forgot to show you how to sign out, so when your visitor leaves for that day, the secretary will go to the sign-out tab and then all of the visitors that are currently signed into the building will be listed here. You can toggle over the picture to make sure you're signing out the right person and click on sign out. Now you have an accurate record of when that person came in, when they left, where they were, and what they were doing. Okay, now, we're going to go back to, let's say I came back next week, I put my name in the quick find and my information appears. Let's say this time, you can also write destinations in that will be printed out, so if it's not in the drop-down menu, let's say we're going to room 103, you can just write that in the menu, I'm sorry, in the box, you can put any notes. Let's say I'm going to say no to these, to all these health questions and if you don't want to have these, this can be turned off, this was just an added piece. So we're going to submit and print and although I did not scan my ID, all that information is still being checked against both databases, National Sex Offender Registry as well as that custom database that is created at the district level or the school level. My badge is printed, visitor, date and timestamped, it has my name, the room that I'm going to, and the name of the school. So that is a second, a return visitor. And then the last example is if you have a visitor that comes into your building and they do not have a scannable ID, so maybe they have a passport, so your secretary would click on manual entry and then carefully put all the information in exactly how it is on the ID. If you wanted to make it an official record and you had a camera on your computer, you could take a picture and then click off official record and that would mean that visitor would not have to bring their ID the next time they were there. If it's an ID like maybe a Costco card that you're going to accept for this time, but you don't want to make it official, you just don't click that and then the next time they have to have a more appropriate form of ID. Okay, any questions about that?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Bob.
It talks about sex offenders, does it check all criminal records or just that particular?
Just the sex offender registry in the 50 states.
So if it's like a burglary or a drunk driving or something else, that wouldn't show up?
No, what some districts though have a list of, they have like a report that they get from the police with local incidents and you can put those in your custom database if you'd like, but no, that specific database is just the sex offenders.
And a second question, who's, okay, when you're going in the building, you do this process, who sees that information?
Just the secretary. So you mean that if there's like a, if there is a hit on the sexual offender?
Yeah.
So that's a great question, so if there is a hit, and that was my next thing that I was going to show you, a text message and an email goes out to a designated list of recipients that you all choose who you want to receive that message. Usually it's like a principal, vice-principal, SRO, someone that's going to come and assist the front-end user with that visitor to let them know that they're either not allowed to come to the building or they need to be escorted to wherever they're going.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Christine, I have a question, what if there's a child custody situation and, you know, one parent isn't allowed to come into the school to see, how would you handle that?
So that is built into our custom database and I'm going to show you both of those right now. So if you could just hold that question for about two seconds.
Okay.
Let me first show you the sexual offender, what happens when there's a match.
Okay.
Let's say we have John Doe coming into the school, he's a return visitor, his information appears. Let's say he's going to the library to help, the librarian, we're going to ask all of his COVID questions, we're going to say no, he doesn't have any COVID symptoms, we're going to submit and print. And the badge does not print and I get this possible offender alert. So the first, I can see there's one of 12, I can see that these two are not the same people, but they have the same first and last name and date of birth, so that's why he came up on the list. When I click on no match, Raptor remembers false positives, so your front-end user will never have to compare these two matches again. Okay, so that's very important because that's a big differentiator with Raptor. The next one does not look like the same guy either and he doesn't have the same first name and last name, but if I scroll down a little bit, he has the same alias. So we're not only checking against the 800,000 sex offenders that exist, but the 400,000 aliases that exist. But I'm going to say it's a no match and again, you're never going to have to compare these two matches again. The next one, I can tell right away that it is a match, if it wasn't this clear, I can click here for more information or bring me right to the sexual offender database page and I'll see more pictures, but I know this is a match, so I'm going to click on match. I get a second chance to verify, yes, it's a match. And then it's going to say you still want to sign into the building, I'm going to say no and then that's when these alerts go out to the designated list of recipients. So it might be, again, principal, vice-principal, SRO. Here's the email that I just received. So it says an offender named John Doe was logged today and then I also, let me show you my phone, I just got a text message and it says, "An offender named John Doe was logged today, 10/22/2020 at 6:22 and signing into McNelly High School," loads of visitor information. So again, a text and an email goes out to whomever you like and also can be sent it to, you know, someone at the district level just so they're aware. So then that person again would come to the front desk, your secretary might say, "John, can you step aside, we're having, you know, your badge in print" and in the meantime, the alerts go out and someone will come assist, either escort, if it's a parent, sometimes schools will escort that, the parent to wherever they're going in the school. Okay, the next question that I will address, the next thing that will address that question is let's say we have a dad, Edmund, and he's coming in to have lunch with his son Sam. So here's Edmund's information, let's say he's going to the lunchroom and he's having lunch with Sam, we can put that in the notes. Edmund doesn't have any COVID symptoms. I'm going to submit and print, again, his badge does not print and I get this custom alert right away, I can see it's the same guy, I'm going to look in the notes, it says Edmund is Sam's non-custodial parent, he is entitled to supervise visitation on the weekends only, please click on the link below and when I click on the link below, I see a copy of the custody agreement. Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm going to say it's a match, I'm going to verify, yes, it's a match, no, I don't want to sign Edmund into the building and then that text message and email gets sent to that designated list of recipients. Okay, committee, it can be as many recipients as you want in any building you want. Any questions about those alerts? And although most of them are custody issues, anyone that you don't want in all of your schools, you can put them in at the district level or if there's someone that you don't want in one of your schools for whatever reason, you know, irate parents or it's kids that were expelled, known gang members, anyone can be in that database. So that is the visitor module. The other modules work very similarly, the contractor module is for contractors, so you can import all your approved contractors in the system so they can all go through the quick find and if, you know, their name does not come up, that means they're not an approved contractor, so that means they can't do work in your building or you can just have them scan just like your other visitors. But let's say that Ryan comes into the building and he's here to fill the vending machines, we have Ryan's first name, last name, date of birth, we also have the company that he works with, we're going to say that he's going to the cafeteria to fill the vending machines and his health check. So I didn't really go over these, if you answer yes to any of these health check questions, it acts just like the sex offender alert, the list of recipients of the alert can be different, so if you want to send those alerts to the nurse or someone else that is going to handle your suspected COVID visitors, so they can quickly escort them out of the building, but that's how these, there's alerts set on all these questions as well. Okay, but since we, oh, did I, yeah, I answered no, so I'm going to submit and print and now Ryan's information is being checked against the sexual offender database as well as the custom database. He cleared both databases and his badge says contractor, it's date and timestamped, it has his name, the company that he works for, where he is in the building, and the name of the building. Okay, so we always suggest, I think that it seems that the contractor module is the most, I guess, difficult to implement just because a lot of districts, their contractors kind of have free range of the building, but we always try and, you know, tell our customers that it's a really important module, a lot of our sex offender hits come from the contractor module. We sold this to Alexander, not Alexander, Arlington, Virginia about a year ago and they had a contractor that was working in the building for 10 years and the first day that he had Raptor, they found out he was a sex offender. So he had his background checked down by his company, but it could have been, you know, years ago. So our sex offender database is updated weekly, so you can always rest assured that it's up to date. Any questions about that contractor module?
I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Shenalsky had a question.
Okay.
Yeah, so is this, is this entire suite connected to the internet? Is this like a software?
Yes, this is totally web-based, so there's no installation of software onto the machines.
What happens when, you know, let's say there's an outage, an internet outage, does the whole scanner stop working or do you have something like locally cached that you can?
It's not local, but we do have a, like you can sign the person in later, so if you put, if you don't have an internet connection and two or three guests come in, you can put them on paper and then manually put them in the system, so you do have a record of them within Raptor.
So the sex offender part and the custom alerts, though, those won't be available when the system is offline?
Correct, correct.
Any other board members with questions, because I can't see all of you, I'm only seeing three or four of you. Christine, go ahead.
Okay, so just like the visitor module, when the, when the contractors sign out, they go back to the office, so right here you would have a list of all of your currently signed-in contractors and you just can mouse over and then sign your contractor out. The student module is, was created for late arrivals and early dismissals. So we connect with your SIS, we integrate with the SIS, we have all your student information in here. So let's say we have a student, I'm in the high school, so let's say we have Marcia Brady, she's coming in late, so we'll put her name in the quick find and we'll click on Simon Marcia. So all of Marcia's information appears again directly from your SIS. Let's say she's late because she overslept and we're going to submit and print, we are not checking Marcia against any database, we're just simply signing her in late and her late badge will print. Her badge says student pass, it had date and timestamp, has her name, her ID, the reason she was late, and the name of her school, so she can give that to her teacher so the teacher knows that she signed into the office. Let's say Marcia is leaving early, so again, we'll put her name in the quick find and we will sign out Marcia Brady, again, her information comes up. Now we see a list of her guardians, also from the SIS. We can, I mean, this is a high school, so we could do a self-sign out, but if this was an elementary school, we can say Alice is here to pick her up and then when we do a guardian sign out, now we're going to look at the guardian's information and we are going to say she's leaving because she has a dentist appointment and we're going to submit and print. We, now we're checking Alice's information against that sexual offender database as well as that custom database and once she clears both of those databases, her badge is printed. Her badge is printed and it says it's an early dismissal, it's date and timestamp, has Alice's name, the child she's picking up, and the name of the school. So that's how the student module works, any questions about the student module?
I have a question.
Sure.
So the list of people that are allowed to pick up, where does that come from? Is that just, I'm here to pick up?
That, approved guardians are from your SIS.
Okay.
So if they're on your SIS, they'll appear there, you can always do a one-time pickup and allow that person, if your policy allows that, to pick up.
And you run them through the system every time?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Good question, anything else for the student? Okay, the staff basically was created for like roaming IT staff or substitute teachers. We're not checking your staff against the sexual offender database or your substitute teacher since they've already had their background checks. So some schools use it differently, I have a school in New Jersey, that, West Orange, New Jersey, they have a kiosk set up by their main entrance of all their schools and it's just for staff to sign in and out, they have a 2D barcode on their badge and they run it under a 2D barcode reader in one of our kiosk stations and they sign in and out every time they're coming out, leaving, coming or leaving the building, so the safety director knows who's in the building if there were to be, if there were an emergency. And then the volunteer module, again, you can, there's a couple ways that can be used. The volunteer, what comes with this whole visitor management package, the volunteers, is you can import all of your approved volunteers and then when a volunteer comes in, they put their name in the quick find, if it comes up, that means they're approved volunteer and their hours are recorded. If they're not an approved volunteer, but they're reading to someone, they can always go in through a visitor, but their hours won't be recorded unless they're approved. We also have a full volunteer solution, which I talked about a teeny bit earlier, but it's a full end-to-end solution, but it's not included in the visitor management. It is, it's a way that your parents can apply to be volunteers through Raptor, they can get their background checks done through Raptor, they can have communication with the school volunteer directors and there's emails, they have a portal, they can check their hours, that whole, there's, so it's a whole full end-to-end solution volunteer system, but the one that's included is basically you import your already-approved volunteers and record their hours. Okay, any questions about that?
I have a question.
Sure.
How about a parent that comes in to bring the kids gym shoes or lunch and so you do the same thing here, you put the parent's name in the system and, okay?
Yeah, we suggest everyone that comes through the door, if it's a UPS guy dropping off a package, it takes 15 to 20 seconds to do the whole process.
Okay.
So we really suggest that you just want a recording of any time someone.
All right, thank you.
Sometimes it's hard to get used to, I know for especially contractors, people that are dropping things off, but yeah, that's what we suggest. And speaking of that, so we have a very robust reporting system, you can run reports about basically anything you want to run reports about, your visitors, your contractors, students, staff, volunteers. You can find out at any time who is in every single building across your entire district. You can sign up for subscriptions, so if you say I want every Monday, I want an email sent to me telling me what sex offender alerts were issued last week. So there's a bunch of subscriptions you subscribe for, so you can get emails with any kind of reports in them. Any questions about the reports? Okay, you're almost done. I just wanted to quickly touch on the code of response function that we added. I mentioned the kiosks, this is basically what it looks like. You can use your own computer for a kiosk with a laptop and plug in a 2D barcode reader and a badge printer. You can also have the badge printer just networked to the secretary station, which is a little bit more secure, so there is some one-to-one, you know, human contact, just picking up the badge. But a lot of schools are using kiosks now as well, just because it's less, you know, contact. We went through these, these health questions and those health questions are also available on the kiosk so that your visitors can also answer the questions there. Contact tracing is a report, so if you have a, if you find out a visitor a couple days later that was in your school, was COVID positive at the time of their visit, you can put their name into a report and find out all the other visitors, contractors, and volunteers that were in the building at the same time. Another thing we offer is remote self-screening, I don't know if this is, I think, Tim, we talked about this, that you guys were not having your students self-screened at home before they came. before they came to school.
We're, we've asked parents to do that, but we don't have this type of a, a system now.
Okay, so this is something, this is, this is extra, but it's something, of course, that we created since COVID. A bunch of districts are using it. But basically, a parent is sent an email every single morning. They click on the, the link. It brings them to a health check of their children, either one child or a few children, and then they get a code at the end if they pass it. Pretty, it's very simple. You can run a report on it. A couple of things I just want to point out that are coming. These are not available yet, but they're awesome. They're things that our, our partners have asked for. One is visitor registration pre-screening, especially with COVID, you want to know how many visitors you're going to expect on a day, so you can keep your numbers low for social distancing. So this is going to be a way for your visitors to kind of pre-register before they get to the building. So this is in development right now. Another thing that's in development is touchless check-in. So a visitor can actually check in with their phone and then scan a code. And that way, they don't have to do any sort of checking. That is also in development. And then this is, this is not in development. This is just some communication. We, we give you guys signs to put up. You get letters to send out to your parents. And what else we, oh wait, and we have some signage that you can, you can customize. And then this would, these were just a couple of different configurations. Now with COVID, a lot of schools are putting the scanner on the other side of the, of the plexiglass. And so visitors can drop their own ID into the scanner as opposed to handing it to a secretary. And then this is just another example of using a kiosk, scanning your ID, so you don't really have to have much contact with the person, and then picking up your badge with the secretary. Okay, and that's it. Not too long.
Well, thank you. I cannot see the entire board, so I don't know if anyone has any questions you're going to, till I get the screen up with everyone's picture on it. So does anyone have anything they'd like to add or ask? Because I can't see all of you.
Maybe if I stop sharing, you'll see.
Yeah, if you stop sharing.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have any board members with questions? Students with questions?
I have one question. In the beginning of your presentation, you said that you got 24, I forget the exact number, 2,400 sex offender and 2,400 custom. Can you explain those numbers? What, what are those? Those are the numbers of, of reports you've gotten this year, or?
Yes, but just in Connecticut.
Okay, and so, okay, all right.
So those were the amount of sex offender alerts that were issued in Connecticut this year.
And how many school, how many districts do you have in, in Connecticut?
Um, I think it said 32, 32 districts.
32 and 2,400.
I cover the large districts like you guys. So I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 large districts, which is 13 schools or more.
2,400 sex offenders in 32 districts in one year?
I think it's one year, unless it's overall, but I think it's one year. Does that seem, sound high?
Yes. It sounds scary to me, actually.
It sounds scary. I assumed it was a year, but maybe it's not. I just get.
But you're coming out with 4,000 alerts, right? 2,400, 20, 2,000 something sex offender and 2,000 something custom.
Correct. Yeah, 2,800, yes, 5,000 alerts total.
And the custom includes custody and anything else the district decides?
Anything else you want, exactly. That's a good question. I assumed it was a year, but maybe that isn't a year. Maybe it's just.
That'll be a good, that'll be a good number to find out.
Yeah.
And then the second question is, in, on your presentation, in your COVID section at the end, you know, instead of, like what you did, you took the thing, put it into the reader, read, it out, whatever. I think I saw on the end, in the kiosk, I could take my license and stick it under the thing, like when you go to the hospital, that you hold it underneath the thing, it reads it. So the secretary or administrator, nobody has to touch my license. And so there's really no touch of anything at this point. I, if you print out, you print out. I could do that. So one of the questions that came up last time when we talked about this was, in some of our schools, the offices are not near the front door. Is it, so this, I just, as you showed that kiosk example, it gave me the thought, can you set up a kiosk at the front door with a camera on it, whatever? And they could do it there, but it reads up to the office?
So the kiosk is kind of like a, a separate ATM, if you will. It's not connected to that secretary's machine. So it's a, it's a totally, so no. So when it, when someone logs into the, goes into the kiosk, the secretary does not see that information on her screen.
So if they did do that, and there was a sex offender violation, the, the office wouldn't know that if it was a remote kiosk? Is that correct?
No, they would, because there's a, there is a queue on the secretary's desk on that screen. It says kiosk, and it has, and a little number would appear, and there'd be a, a sound. Also, their badge wouldn't print, and those notifications would go out.
And with, I'm sorry, would the badge print downstairs, or would the badge print upstairs in the office?
If there was a sex offender alert, the, the secretary would still have to go through and clear that person, make sure they're not matches. And if you say you can, the badge will print and allow them in, then the badge will print. But until that secretary clears those matches, then the badge will not print.
And are the matches cleared at the kiosk or upstairs?
No, at the secretary's desk.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just in terms of thinking about it operationally.
Yep.
We, we would have it print out where one of our staff.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted, I'm running through the whole thought process. It makes it, and I didn't, the way it sounded, it sounded like there was no connectivity, so it wouldn't be able to. So, but that makes perfect sense. It prints upstairs, I'm able to check, actually, sounds even safer that I could check the matches upstairs, per se, and you're not standing in front of me while I'm doing that. And if I did have something, the alert text and email goes out while I'm still standing downstairs, right?
Correct. One thing, though, what we suggest, best practices, all first-time visitors actually scan their ID in that little toaster, because that is the only way that the picture on the license is connected to the first name, last name on the license. All return visitors can just scan their information under that 2D barcode reader on a kiosk. Their picture appears on the screen, their information. It says, welcome, Christine, and they answer the questions or whatever. You can have first-time visitors go in through the kiosk, and if they, if it's a first-time visitor, it will take the visitor's picture. But if your visitor knows they're a sex offender, they can take someone else's license with them. It'll, you know, so best practices, first-time visitors always scan in, have their license scanned with a receptionist.
Okay.
But some schools say, you know what, we want all visitors first time and returning, going through the kiosk. So they just kind of take that risk.
Okay.
Thank you. Bob?
Yes, I have a process question for the superintendent. Does, does our security committee make recommendations?
They, yes, they do, and they, they can, and they actually will.
Okay. Thank you.
One, one step further with this, with regard, one of the next things we're going to talk about is how we can and what the cost will be to create the same type of entryways that you see at the middle schools. Well, not exactly the same, because I think those doors that go from that entryway into the office, you should be buzzed in.
Yeah.
And you're not, right now, if they're buzzed from the outside into that entryway, then people can walk right into the office. So we're missing one step there, quite honestly.
True.
So I, I did have a, a conversation just recently with, it was actually one of the folks who worked on the athletic, on the facilities, the athletic facilities study with us. It'd be a different branch, or a different company. But to take a look at that, and let's see what would have to happen. In, in most of our elementary schools, the entryway is fairly close to the office, and some, like O'Shaughnessy, they're on two different floors, which makes it a little bit more difficult. But that, that would allow us to put the scanner in that area, have the person drop their license in, get it back out, have it be read on a computer on the secretary's desk, and have the badge printed off on the secretary's desk, then the secretary can buzz them in. It would be 10 times better than what we're doing right now. But of course, that's a, there's a physical structure that needs to go along with that. So that's, that's one of the next things that we're going to talk about, Mr. Brown. That committee.
And do I see any other questions? Mr. Falwell?
Hi, so I want to thank Christina for coming in and explaining your thorough presentation on how the Raptor technologies work. And again, I appreciate that. So this is more of a comment rather than a question, but I think we should explore other options. I realize that, to my understanding, just from my own research, because I knew this was coming up, that there are other companies that produce different security systems for schools and different management systems. So if I feel, if we are going to have a serious discussion around this, I believe, maybe we should have other companies come in and present to the board. I think that would be worthwhile, especially when it comes to the cost, which one would be most cost-effective, and which one would be the cheapest and the most effective. And also, I feel that we should have a discussion with the safety committee about the safety procedures that we already have in place in our schools before making a decision on this.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? Joe?
Yeah. So again, Christine, thank you very much for your presentation. So a couple of questions that I have. So as far as, so the National Sex Offender Registry, so this, you pull that from the national database, and then is there any sort of local database that is just sort of like doubled onto, or strictly from the national level?
It is strictly from the national level for that database, and the other database is your custom database. Again, that is where you guys put whatever you want on it.
Okay. I, I guess one of the concerns that I have is when it comes up with that matching screen, I, I don't know if I like that as far as, again, like, I would imagine that your license number would be associated with the correct person. But, you know, I, I don't know. I, I guess it's your picture from committing a crime or, or whatever is maybe different than your presentation or what it looks like on a license. So I guess I have a couple, couple uncertainties with that. And then as far as the, the secondary customizable database, who fills that stuff out? Is that more of a, I guess, Tim, is that something that occurs at the central office?
So it's, it's a building level. What typically happens is that, at each building, we don't have a lot, but more than you would think. There are custody arrangements. And so for example, if there's a set of parents who then become divorced, and one parent has physical custody and has certain rights and another parent doesn't, we are generally presented at the school level with the paperwork from the court. And so that information would go into this, go into this database. And those are the types of things that we check right now. But it would go into the database to, to make it more efficient, quicker, easier to, to be able to access that information.
Okay. So that's helpful. And then I, I guess my, my third and final question is, a, anytime there's some sort of security system that we're, we're looking to do, I, I guess my, my biggest question would be, how much does this move the dial, so to speak? So if we're, if we say that we're 95% safety-oriented, security-oriented, you know, how, how much does this move the dial? And then I guess the, the secondary component of that is because of, I, I just look at the high school, and certainly, we're in a COVID world right now. But I, I assume that eventually, we're going to get back to somewhat of a more substantial normal, where we have people coming to games, we have people from other surrounding towns coming in to do, to either watch a game or to view an art exhibit or something like that. I, I guess my question is, this, this sort of puts a, a patch on one particular area. And, and I, I don't know if this necessarily creates more of a, a global security across the border.
So, and I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know if we, you know, I don't know if we need to pull Christine into this, into this discussion. I, I will tell you, you're talking about two entirely different things.
Well, I just don't know, is this type of system able to accommodate like a higher?
So if you, if you let me finish. Let's take a normal, non-COVID world, and we have a, a youth basketball game at school, boys or girls, doesn't, doesn't matter which one. The general public is invited in, and they come in, the press come in. That's, that's the norm. We're, we're not screening people to come in. What we're looking at here is a visitor management system when you have your 2,000 students in the high school and can, and controlling that access. That's, that's what this is all about. It's not about trying to control the access for a high school sporting event.
Okay, so just like regular business hours?
Correct.
Right. We do have some schools that use, I mean, maybe that would be, that's a, a larger example, but we have something called like batch printing. So if you, maybe, not necessarily, like that kind of, but like a, say a Valentine's Day party, and you know the attendees ahead of time, you can batch print your badges. So we do have accommodations for, you know, things that have larger amounts of people coming in at one time.
Sure. With like, when we had, you know, previous to this, we had events in the school for
Yeah.
holiday or something like that. Basically, our folks are doing that manually for the fourth, all the fourth grades at Deronowski, for example, four, four or five of them, looking at those student lists and who those, and who those visitors are. That's, that's a pretty good task for our folks to get all of those folks
Yeah.
signed in and, you know.
I do have schools using them for after-hours events, too, with the kiosk. They have, they have kids, a chess club come in and sign in through the kiosk.
Yeah, for something small like that, I mean, you certainly, certainly could. You've got Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts.
Yeah.
First Robotics, things, things of that nature, absolutely. Because those are still, those are still contained.
Right.
You know, it's not like having the soccer game, the football, the basketball game, the gymnastics event, wrestling event.
Right.
Thank you. Um, do I have any other questions from any of the board members? Well, Christine, I, I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Being invited.
A lot. Thank you, and giving us a chance to look this over and, um, think about it. And I, I really do appreciate you taking the time, and you did a great job.
Thank you. And if you guys have any questions later, feel free to, Tim has my information. Feel free to.
Certainly, we will do that. I appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
All right, continuing on with our meeting. Next is, we have communications from the public. Steve, I guess you would be the one to receive any, or have you got anything there?
No, my, my email was.
I'm sorry, Tim. I'm sorry.
Yep. My email was still on there. I'm checking right, I've, I've been checking all along. I do not, I have not received any emails for public comment.
Okay, thank you. If you do, let me know, and we can go back to it, okay?
I will.
Thank you. Communication from board members. Bob, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I did not prepare anything, and I wasn't going to say, but I just want to say, make a brief statement here. I have quite a bit of contact with schools all over the state, with teachers, and through a couple of state committees I'm on. And I want to say that Suddington, I believe, is doing the absolutely best job of any place I've seen. Our administration, our teachers, our staff, and our students and parents, it's extraordinary what they're doing. And, and the, the, the stress on these people is just off the charts. It really is.
Yeah.
And the second thing is, to the public, because I hear it from parents and students and people, because I'm still, you know, part of the community, please be patient. Please understand that these people are doing the best they can. Nobody likes this. Nobody wants the present situation to be the situation. But there are circumstances, there's monetary circumstances, there's circumstances about finding, the lack of substitute teachers, about how we proceed with everything that just are bigger than is possible right now to handle. So please, if you have criticism, express the criticism, but please be supportive. These people are working incredibly stressful jobs right now. And I think from what I can tell around the state, doing as good a job, if not better, than anywhere else I've seen, really. So I just want to thank all of them and, and hope we do get through it before too long. Like Joe said, let's sooner the better. But anyway, I'm done.
Thank you, Bob. Very well said. Anyone else on the board have anything to say? Okay, I'll move on to our superintendent for the administrative report.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody.
Thank you, Mrs. Kermit. Uh, just a note, we should all remind ourselves to that we're not live, so we should say our names. Um, yeah, before we speak, just to identify who we are. I mean, it's pretty easy with the with the first names. But um before we speak, we actually should identify ourselves. That's that's part of the the rules of being virtual. So uh, Tim Kinnell, superintendent, and I do want to say, I didn't add actually have this as part of our report, but Mr. Brown, I will say that we receive routinely a good number of very positive emails. Uh, sometimes there are questions that people have and almost, almost always, those emails begin with or end with, I know that the teachers and administrators are working very hard and we get a lot of thank yous for that. And it and it's very, very much appreciated. We we do also get the opposite kind of emails occasionally, and those are less pleasant. But nonetheless, I did want to say that we have an awful lot of support, not only from our parents, but also from our staff members. And so um we we receive those. I try to, you know, I share those at times with the board and I try to make sure that I share uh the positive ones with Mr. Madancy. So that being said, uh, I have two things, we have three items, but I have two under the first. Uh, the first is the Chromebook shipment update. So the first part of that, so two part. The first part of that is our large shipment, our thirty-seven hundred Chromebooks, I believe, Mr. Madancy, yes, uh, are still uh on schedule for being shipped mid-November. So that date has continued to be the same for the last six weeks or so, which I'm going to take as a good sign because previous to this, every time we checked, it was moved back a couple of weeks. So it it seems that we're still on schedule for that mid-November. Um, large number of devices, when we do get those in, it will be uh quite a task. We'll get them unboxed. We will get the asset tags on them set up and begin distributing them. For the second part of it, I'm going to go to Mr. Madancy because we have some good news on uh good news from the state. So someone should write that down. We actually have good news from the state. Mr. Madancy, would you like to share that good news from the state?
Yes, we are expecting on Monday um our first shipment of eleven hundred Chromebooks. Um, and they 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 actually came with the white glove service, it's called, that you can, which we uh the the machines have all been asset tagged and imaged and ready for deployment. They've been unboxed, taken to us in grades. We will be using um student helpers and technology staff to uncrack them, for lack of a better term, and put them in the carts and get those carts out to the schools ASAP. Our goal with those devices is to uh send about four class sets to each elementary school um and about a hundred devices to each middle school, another hundred devices to the high school. Our challenge, as you guys all know, from the spring, we were not one-to-one. So a lot of our students still have limited exposure and experience with the virtual learning environment with tools such as Google Classroom. We haven't been able to get them at, you know, our our initial goal, thinking we were going to have the Chromebooks by now, would be to orientate them to their virtual classrooms while we're in person so that they would be able to navigate their way more independently if we ever had to learn from home remotely, whether it was just a class because of a temporarily remote, you know, situation with a a a quarantining uh or whether the numbers locally rose to the point that we'd have to shift our model. Um, so with those uh sets, there is a set in every school right now where we've been using those for those temporary remote learners. But now we'll be able to deploy those cards as well to classrooms to really get our students ramped up and exposed to their virtual classrooms so that they have a skill set if and when they need to use it, um, which hopefully relieves the the pet the pressure on parents. I think that in the spring didn't necessarily have uh, you know, the training or background in some of these tools. And so uh combination, we are going to be sending out training videos and whatnot to parents as well, especially if we have a Go-remote so that they can assist their children. Um, but but our goal is to get our our youngest learners up and running and get them exposed and familiar with the tools and the interface. And so coming Monday, everyone's really excited because they know this is an important next step for us in terms of just readiness. Um, so that's our plan. And uh the the district technology department, the staff uh has been doing an amazing job working with uh the buildings and trying to get them into the hands of students and getting cards deployed and doing everything we need to do to support our schools.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thanks, Miss. Thank you, Mr. Madancy.
Yeah, I see it. Uh, Mr. Falwell, did you have your hand up when originally, and I didn't mean to ignore you, but would you
Yeah, I, yeah, I did. Um, and then uh Mr. Madancy added to it. So um David Falwell here. Um, I just had a couple of questions. So you guys talked about um the ship, the um upcoming shipment of Chromebooks into the district. So how many dis- uh, I I just missed the numbers. I'm, I think you, Mr. Madancy said eleven hundred. And I missed a number, uh, Mr. Kinnell and stated, um,
Thirty-seven hundred.
Thirty-seven.
Approximately thirty, I believe it's thirty-seven hundred, yes.
So would that, so between the those two upcoming shipments, does that make the district one-to-one or?
Yes, yeah, it will because we're using the uh, we didn't order a a true one-to-one uh because we had a a an inventory of devices that were one year or less old uh from our existing inventory. And that's what made the whole um in in totality of the device inventory that we have.
Hmm. So every student in the district will have access to a device, their own device, not a community device?
Correct. And and when I say, good question though, David, in terms of using the word access, I like that because we were not at the get-go planning on assigning every K-one-two student a device. Those will be carded in the classrooms. They're not going to need to go back and forth daily. Um, a little bit of a risk with young kids with backpacks and high-end electronics. So the idea is to have them housed, but the nice part if they're located um locally, like in the in their their teacher's classroom. If there happens to be an unexpected case and we have to deploy immediately, the devices are already housed in the classroom and we can turn that around almost instantly. Uh, but third grade through twelfth, we do plan on uh providing every child a device that will be theirs. Um, so essentially, yes, a a full one-to-one in terms of just deployment and daily possession is the little bit of the tweak.
What about those K-the-two students? So say um there was a COVID case um late in the afternoon and contract tracing couldn't be done. So how, and the school had to be closed for the day, how would those devices be turned over to the students? So remote learning could be done.
Yep. So we schedule a grab-and-go kind of pickup process at the schools for that uh for the next day. And so you're talking like in an elementary classroom, might be about sixteen families. But we also have on occasion whenever needed to use district staff to get them to the child's home if they don't have transportation.
By the next day. So say if it was a Tuesday, a Tuesday night, you find out around six, seven o'clock at night, you can get them for the next morning.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be like the record journal sitting at the bottom of your driveway. Um, that that day, it might be, uh, you know, they're getting a asynchronous lessons pushed out until they all have their devices and we might need to start the following day.
Yeah, but you have to be realistic. If if we get notification, for example, this just happened. Notification on the Thalberg case
Yeah.
was eight o'clock at night. And quite frankly, I think we did a pretty darn good job of turning that around in a in a really, really, really uh decent span of time. And uh Mrs. Reeves did an amazing job in scheduling all of that, had the Chromebooks uh at the school and arranged for uh for a parent pickup of that. Uh, you know, we're going to always do the very best we can, but we're not going to promise instantaneous um access because that it it's not realistic and I and I don't think you can, I don't think you can say that. I think that's
The nice thing that we've learned that we didn't know in the spring is we, you know, how quickly to set up a grab-and-go process between the lunches that we've provided, you know, where people know how to kind of keep it in a socially distant and safe way and yet still be able to inventory and sign off on who's getting that device with that asset tag number and also how to connect with the families in a safe way so that, you know, everybody is on the same page. And and like to to Mr. Kinnell's point, Thalberg is a textbook example, Kennedy as well. Uh, the following day when they had to close down, working with families to pick up and and provide devices because they were not one-to-one. So there, the schools are really doing a wonderful job. The administrators are working hard with families to make sure we provide that access as quickly as we can.
Hatton Hatton did the exact same thing. And so so there's two other pieces to this. I want to flashback to um when we had the discussion about purchasing these these devices. And you and you may not recall this because honestly, last June seems like it was five years ago. But the discussion was the combination of the thirty-seven hundred Chromebooks. And this is before we knew we were getting eleven hundred from the state. The thirty-seven hundred Chromebooks plus existing inventory was going to give us enough to be one-to-one for every student in the district and have enough so that we had uh breakage, replacements, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So that was the, that was the discussion and our intention. And when we do have those, we we were supposed to have them by the end of July, which, I mean, that's old news. Everyone knows that at this point in time, but that was the intent so that we would have uh devices for every student in the district. And at that time, we also had the discussion about K-two, we would have them in the rooms and they would be available for students. Now, here's the second piece of that, though. Last March, when we knew we were closing, we closed before the governor said everyone was going to close. All the, all the Hartford area districts all closed on March thirteenth. And the governor finally came out with, well, we're closing on March sixteenth. So we already did that. Not only did we have packets of information prepared because we knew that was coming, right, Mr. Madancy, we had packets of information prepared and being sent home during the course of the week. We also had Chromebooks out and and being deployed. So if we know, if we know that the metrics are trending in that direction and it's likely that we're going to have to go uh full remote with the Chromebooks right there in the classroom, we'll be able to deploy those and have those go home with the students just like we did last spring. Only I think we'll be in, we'll be in much better shape than we were in March, certainly.
And that's that's often that we have um such a quick process for the grab-and-go and that we have, we have this planned out. And I I thank you guys for that. Um, I do have another question. Um, what percentage of students in the district do not have internet access? Do we know that number? And what is the district's plan for ensuring that they do have internet access?
I'll take that one. I I think if you asked our families right now, ninety percent of them would tell you they don't have network access because that's what it seems like with all of the requests we're getting for hotspots. Um, but we actually had done a survey, actually quite a few years back, some of the board members may remember when we were considering a one-to-one device. And it was a combination of who has a device and who has internet. And at the time, we were actually close to around ninety-one percent of our families had internet access in the home. What we're running into, and and unfortunately, this has become my life this week. Um, and I think you may have had an opportunity to see a correspondence I sent out to the SPS staff today. Um, the issues aren't always network access. So we may have a family saying I have network access. But if you're running fifteen smart devices in your home between speakers, TVs, gaming systems, tablets, smartphones and computers and you're streaming, you're just really just draining the bandwidth exponentially and asking a lot of a machine, if you will, in order to 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 keep up with the demands of of streaming in a a live class, especially where you have multiple, you know, two parents working from their home uh and and maybe a sibling. You got four devices streaming simultaneously. Additionally, we have problems with sometimes a kid is up in the bedroom because that's a quiet place to work because everyone's home. And yet the modem is downstairs in a home office. And some of these homes are large homes that I'm talking. So the signal is not making its way to the device and there's an assumption that there's a device issue. Um, and lastly, Mr. O'Shaughnessy touched upon this, some neighborhoods in Suddington, he touched upon this a couple of meetings ago. Depending on the carrier, even if we were to provide a hotspot, don't carry a strong enough signal to give them the streaming bandwidth that they need uh to actively engage with live instruction. And so, you know, originally, our goal was to say cameras must be on. We've had to make some adjustments along the way now at like at times, if you're trying to load Canvas up or Google Classroom and it's spinning, shut your camera for a minute so that that page can load and then you turn your camera back on. You know, like little fixes and workarounds like that to get things to work together and jive. Um, but the that's a really long answer, but in terms of true families that have no internet, I would say we're not as um probably not as high as as the demand we're getting for hotspots. But I also think it might be the tiered level of uh internet service that people are paying for that maybe can't keep up the demands the household is placing on it. So it's really a very complex question. Um, and I, that's why I set that out today to get families, hopefully, to understand that, you know, we can't just provide every family that requests a hotspot one as just the quick go-to fix uh because there are data plans, there are carrier signals, there are other things associated with our efforts to do that. And I just, you know, it it would be something that would be a task that I don't think the district could 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 handle.
Well, let's let's flash, so this is Tim Kinnell again. Let's flashback to the spring. We did a survey and we had in the neighborhood, we ended up distributing, uh, I want to say it was it was between seventy-five and a hundred hotspots.
Hmm.
Those were for families that truly did not have access. So we did that and we also, we also looked at that again in the fall. So there's, there's two different issues here. Do you truly have, you know, not have access or is your bandwidth in the house um not adequate or certainly not where you, not where you want it to be? And I think that's, that's the secondary problem. But when we did it, the number of families who indicated that they did not have access was in that seventy-five to one hundred range. I know Mrs. Colgrove is looking at me right now. She probably has the number right on the tip of her tongue. But that's, we we did do that. Uh, there was also, to go along with the Chromebooks that the state didn't tell us they were going to get for us, but we're thankful that they did. There was also a a um a service where parents would receive a voucher uh for connection, right, for broadband um connection. And of the, we received nine, ten, eleven, something like that in terms of the actual vouchers. We only had one family take, take the voucher or 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 accept the voucher, as I, as I recall. Well, we, it was, it was a fairly low number. But when we did our due diligence in the springtime, we did have quite a few families who really didn't have access. And that's why we went the hotspot route with those families. So with the the secondary problem that has developed is the one of the amount of bandwidth um in the home. But we really looked at those families initially, Mr. Falwell, who who just didn't have access and we wanted to make sure that they did.
But to the board's point, you know, you may get some emails from people as we start to review requests from hotspots that are very unhappy that the district isn't providing them a hotspot. But when we do a connectivity au- audit, I mean, quite honestly, if you're living in a six-hundred-thousand-dollar, thirty-eight-hundred-square-foot home and you're asking us for a hotspot because you've got a lot of devices running in your home, that's a difficult conversation because I I, who bears the responsibility there to provide the network access that's adequate for the student in the home at that time? You know, it it can't always be just give us a hotspot and and we'll move on our way. Because like I said, there's an inventory issue with that, trying to keep up with the demand. There's lead time with every time we replenish and there's a monthly data cost to the district to that. Our goal really is for families that don't have internet to make sure they have internet in their home.
That's what, and that's what we did. Exactly.
Joe, I see your hand up.
Yeah, um, so Dave actually stole my question. Uh, so so thanks, Dave. But it it actually brought up a couple of other things uh that I had been thinking about. So um when you request a hotspot, I know that we're doing um connectivity audit and everything else. Do we, it's interesting that you bring up the six-hundred-thousand-square-foot, you know, the six-hundred-thousand-dollar house type thing. Is there a way that we can um, I I guess, create some sort of application process for that? Number one, to just cut down, but then maybe in in lieu of that as well. Um, I I don't know if there's recommendations from our IT that like, hey, listen, these network extenders are really good. This is what we suggest. Uh, just sort of like a quick email that, you know, sort of give people other options to be able to boost their own modems and things like that. Just because I, again, me as sort of a layperson, and I'm sure James could attest to this about me, is um, you know, again, like I I tend not to utilize technology until I absolutely need it. And um, you know, somebody went over the whole of network extenders and it's revolutionized my uh my household. And um, you know, again, like, uh, I I never had to need it before. And now that we, we're trying to have quiet places for Hannah to do her work, Ziggy to do his work type stuff. It's um, I I think if if we as a district sort of created something to maybe send out to parents, if we haven't already.
So that that was going to be my point to so, Tim Kinnell and again, Mr. Madancy and that and that tech team has already, they already developed uh an entire set of criteria. And when this happens, there's a, there's a tech team member who would then talk with, talk with the family about that.
Okay.
Yep, so we we did do that. That's, that was a necessary step.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I'm continuing, Mr. Kinnell and you.
Okay, thanks. I have two, two more items.
Yeah.
The fir- the first one, I uh, we included this in your, in your board packet. You um, you see that DPH created a town-level COVID response framework. That's different than uh was there previously. And I actually just received right before the board meeting happened, a um a revised addendum four. And an addendum four, you may recall, I don't know, there's been a lot of And in addendum four, you may recall, I don't know, there's been a lot of information that it was almost a hard and fast number. You know, if you're above ten cases per one hundred thousand in, in, in a week, and those were countywide numbers, you were supposed to move to hybrid learning and, um, and continue in hybrid learning model until you hit above twenty-five and then move to, uh, remote learning. So that's, that guidance has been revised. And as, uh, as State Department of Education, as DPH has learned more, they realized that there's a little more flexibility that's required. So the numbers that you see on that infographic, as they, as they term it, are a little more flexible and, and you can see the flexibility. It's not an automatic move from one to the other. And the numbers of new cases per one hundred thousand are based on a two-week, uh, two-week average. And whereas before they were looking at it as a, as a county, they're, they still collecting county and state numbers, um, and, and comparing those, of course. But it's really looking at a town by town, uh, set of data. So there's a little bit more information. And when I get a chance to review the explanation that was just sent by the State Department of Education, I'll, I'll forward that on as well. But it's a, it's a little different way to, to look at it. And when, if slash when we get to that point, the discussions are DPH, State Department of Education through the commissioner's office, and then at the local health department and local district level. So it's not just going to be numbers and it's not just going to be one agency making that determination.
Uh, James, is there any other question?
Yeah. So what are the numbers looking like today or, or for the last couple of weeks? How many cases per one hundred thousand are we looking at right now?
Sure. I, I didn't look, it's usually changes on Thursday and I honestly didn't look this morning. But, um, as of, as of last week, we were at four point one in Southern. Uh, two weeks prior to that, we were at two point eight, I want to say. So the, the trend is up as it is across the, across the state. We're, we're still, um, if you look at the interactive map, we're still in that gray area, which is the under five. You know, the red areas are the ones that you've read about in the, in the paper or you've seen on, on television. You know, the Danbury's, the, you know, Norwich, et cetera, where the cases have exploded. Uh, the, the biggest concerns I think that people have right now are the, are those, you know, like the case is exploding. The, the DPH personnel say continuously, and we meet with them every Tuesday. They say continuously, they're not finding the transmission occurring in schools. It's happening outside of school. It's happening at other, other events such as, uh, small get-togethers. Um, you know, you've read it all, you, you don't need to have me repeat it. But it's those, those other types of events that are generating these, uh, positive cases. And they, and they have an impact on us if we have, uh, you know, a student whose parent tests positive, then that student is a close contact. The quarantine, if the, if the student then tests positive, their classmates become close contacts. So there, there is a ripple effect.
I think, I have, um, it, it's right now, it was the week one cases. Cause as he just explained, it's over a two-week period. The week one cases were twelve, the week two cases were twenty-three. Um, our cases per one hundred thousand right now are five point seven.
Oh, we went up.
Yes.
Yeah. So that means we're out of the gray. We're, we're into the, into the yellow, I guess. But nonetheless, it's, it's still something that we're, we're monitoring every week. I, I, I think I, I've, I've said this a number of times, but it bears repeating. We meet with the Department of Public Health in a, in a webinar setting every Tuesday. And that is literally about four or five hundred, um, superintendents, school nurses, other, you know, public health officials. So we get the updates, we get the local updates every Tuesday, um, through our health district. The town managers, um, superintendents, uh, school nurses and HR directors all, all have the opportunity to chat about what's, what's going on locally.
I think you have one more item.
I do have one more item. So the athletic facility study was completed and, uh, we had the opportunity to sit down with them and get a, a view of that. I had Mr. Shoda come in, Mr. Romano, myself, Mr. Risser. And what I'm going to do then, uh, Mrs. Carmody, if you don't mind, I'll work with you on a, on a, on a date. That's a fairly detailed report and, and it's probably a lengthy presentation. And as long as we're doing things virtually, I think it would be a good idea to schedule that as a special meeting virtually and do it on a non-board meeting day. So, so that there's ample time for that and people have ample time to ask questions. So I wanted to let everyone know that that has been completed. And, um, if we can, you know, work on scheduling that time, then we can do, you know, dedicated meeting just around that so that you can have, uh, the results in hand, have time to ask questions. And, and we will have a report. I, what I'd like to do, I, I will talk with them, it's Castle Booze, is get that in. If we can get it in digital, digital format and get it out to you ahead of time. But I think it does, it does need some explanation obviously. It's not just the.
We'll work on a special date for that then. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Canell. Any questions, Mr. Canell, on that? All right, now, uh, next we have, uh, our student reps. Do I want to see someone that wants to go first? Okay, Brett, go right ahead.
Brett, you're on mute.
Um, actually I'm going to start first today. Yes. Okay, um, this is Jalissa Vincent. For those of you, hi. First on the agenda, uh, steps, oops, sorry. The Halloween costume contest hosted by the Steps Thing Tank will take place Friday, October thirtieth. Uh, students and staff will wear their costumes during the school day and will be judged by Mr. Pepe, APs, class advisors and class officers. Participants will be given prizes for best overall, most creative, funniest and most relevant to their subject area for teachers. Students will enter by submitting a photo on social media of them in their costume. Virtual students must be wearing their costume to class as well. Teachers will nominate themselves or colleagues by snapping a picture and emailing their APs. Everyone must wear a CDC approved mask if in the building and students and staff may wear hats, um, slash earhead pieces as long as they can still be identified. And no, um, like any, what was the word? Inappropriate, uh, language, inappropriate, inappropriate, uh, costumes. Uh, all winners will be, uh, announced Friday, uh, period eight, the same day. Um, we are trying to keep the positive vibes, vibes flowing at SHS. Secondly, the student elections have been completed. All students from each class has, um, voted for their running peers, October twentieth. And the winners were announced yesterday on Canvas, the twenty-first. Congratulations to the officers of class, uh, class officers of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four.
And thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So, uh, I know Jalissa wouldn't explicitly state it, but she is the secretary for class of twenty twenty-two, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
So continuing, tonight, as most of you know, is virtual open house. Teachers have created videos for parents and students if they would like to watch them. And it was made available tonight at five PM and they will not, uh, shut it down per se. Because there will be, there could be new students who are transferring from other school districts. And in these videos, all teachers cover the basics, which include what the room looks like, contacts, contact information, a syllabus of the course and tech issues, contact information. So I think, or continuing, I think at last meeting, we discussed, or we talked, or we told you that PSAT day is October twenty-ninth. Grade twelve, or I'm sorry, grade twelve, grade eleven is required. Grades nine, ten and twelve are remote and do have a full school day. Um, this will be put in Mr. Pepe's PSA as a reminder this weekend for all students. And finally, for me, music of the night was held on October fourteenth, twenty twenty. It, there were no other teams from our school district. So it was mostly a performance for the parents, which was great. And it was held at Fontana Field. So now I'll pass it on to Amret.
Okay. Hi, guys. It's. So I have the sports update, bear with me, it's kind of long. Um, but all good news, um, our girls soccer team is undefeated to, till date. Um, the Lady Knights are not allowed an opposition goal in all season. Um, for boys soccer, we have collected, they just collected their second win of the season. For our girls and boys cross-country teams were three oh and three one um, this season, and we have our next meeting October twenty-eighth at Farmington. Um, our girls swim and dive team are waiting their final results for their first ever virtual meet against Bristol. Um, they came yesterday at their, with separate officials at each venue, um, were presently undefeated. Our volleyball team is coming off of the straight set win. Um, that's their third victory of the season. And the team is hosting a Bristol Central, uh, is hosting a Bristol Central tonight in SHS West Gym. Um, the match is actually currently being streamed as we speak on Twitch. And we had, they had their senior night last, uh, this last, this last Monday on the nineteenth. Um, our field hockey team travels to Simsbury tomorrow afternoon. Um, they're tied, they tied against Farmington and Canton and they're, and they're searching for their first, um, victory of the season. Lastly, um, we have our Blue Knights football game tomorrow, or football, or, and they're going to have their cheerleaders and dance team in recognition, recognition of the rising seniors. It's also our senior night. Um, it'll be a non-contact football competition and starts at six tomorrow at the fields. And that is all we have for you tonight. So thank you.
We had quite a report. There was a lot going on. I want you to know during this whole meeting, Mr. Pepe has been eating. Trying to know what he's been eating. Are you going to share? No? Okay. Moving on. Thanks, kids. Um, next we have our policy and personnel committee meeting. Uh, Mrs. Clark?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. And I'm going to bet Mr. Pepe is having popcorn. I'm just guessing.
It wasn't popcorn. It was something, it was potato chips or something.
Hey, leave him alone.
No, I'm just thinking, Mr. O'Shannon is going to be jealous. Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. O'Shannon, don't say potato chips. That's why I said popcorn.
Nothing in front of you.
That's okay. All right, we had our last, uh, personnel, policy and personnel committee meeting, um, on, at, before our last meeting, which is why you're getting updated on it now. Um, we're bringing forth this evening, after our discussion and review, uh, two job descriptions. One is a network manager and that was a position that was created several years ago, um, but never filled. And the district is now going to, is revisiting that. Um, and the second job description we're bringing and will be voting on later in the meeting is the associate athletic director. And again, this was a stipend position proposed and adopted, um, but we, we hadn't moved on it, um, until now. We also discussed four of the policies, um, that you're going to, we have up for our first read for this evening um, in the one thousand series. Um, so if you do have any questions about that, feel free to either contact Steve or myself. Um, do we have any questions about any of this? You have all the, you've already gotten the information on this, but.
There was a lot of information, so thank you for, uh, all of that, a lot of work. I can see.
It's a lot, it's a lot of, there's a lot of reading with these policies. Steve's shaking his head going, uh huh.
Uh, and I just want to add one thing for our board, just because we're on the topic of policy for the agenda's sake. It's just good information to have because we did touch upon it, uh, towards the end of the policy committee, just as a process, you know, issue that our board as a whole, as you guys know, the, going back a couple of years now, the amount of legislative action that continues to occur each session just creates a backlog of policies that need to be either adopted, reviewed or revised. And so our conversation at the last policy committee meeting was the model policies that we are provided by shipment are very reliable um, and extremely aligned with both the practices of the district and compliant with all of the requirements associated with the mandates that are passed down to us. So my goal will be to try and get our policy committee members, you know, larger batches of policies and maybe a longer time in between our meetings. You know, maybe if I can get them, those about a month in advance so that they've got time to review them and so that we can bring you policies that have been vetted already by the committee, but really use this as an opportunity with the shipment model policies to start to kind of catch up and close that gap for some of the policies that are outstanding that we need to adopt.
Big job, Steve. There's so much to do in policy. But thank you very much, the entire committee. Um, next are, uh, town government communications. I don't believe we have anything, Mr. Canell. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Canell.
I do have, I do have one, but before I do that, can I just, can I just go back to one thing? Because I actually thought our students were going to cover this, but perhaps they may not have known this. Uh, I, I didn't want to steal this particular thunder, as they say. They do have something to, um, announce if you don't mind. This has to do with, um, an award. So Southern High School has been given the national recognition of being a Special Olympics National Unified Champion School.
Wow, wonderful.
Oh, wonderful.
It's fantastic. Now.
They do a great job. Oh.
So I've just had, uh, just yesterday, some communicate, we just found this out.
That's great.
Yesterday. So, uh, we've had some communication back and forth internally and, uh, we want to do some type of a recognition for this. So the, the initial proposal, and I'm sure this is going to be refined over time. I know, and Mr. Pepe's smiling now because he's taking full credit for this, I'm sure.
Yeah, sure. Still eating.
It's our, it's our, our staff and our students. But nonetheless, um, one of the, uh, the dates that we, we talked about is November fifth. So if you, if you can keep that in mind and perhaps on an honoring, uh, or do, or doing this recognition. We happen to have a girls volleyball game that evening at six o'clock. And I believe the boys soccer game was originally scheduled for three forty-five and they're in the process of rescheduling that to five forty-five. Uh, so we thought, depending on the weather, we could do this either inside or outside. But of course, me wanting to have more recognition rather than less recognition, we're going to see if there's a way to do it, do it at both. Uh, so if, if there's a way for us to do it, say, at the outset of the boys soccer game and then do it at the outset of the volleyball game or at halftime of, of one and the beginning of the other. So, so look for that. I'll get the information to you and, uh, Jalissa, Amret and Brett. I apologize if I did, if I did take that away from you guys. Well, I wanted to make sure that, um, everyone, everyone was aware of that. It's pretty exciting news for us.
That is wonderful.
So I do have one, which is, uh, town government communications. And, um, Mrs. uh, Donello, Mrs. Clark and myself attended the Board of Finance meeting last week at which time Mrs. Donello, Mrs. Donello did a wonderful job explaining the non-lapsing account, uh, just like she did at the, at the board meeting the, the previous week. Um, and there were some questions, but there was an awful lot of information there. And, uh, the Board of Finance has been great in, you know, in its level of understanding, quite frankly. Uh, and so the, so the town government communication that I, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that the Board of Finance did agree to, to fund the non-lapsing account at the maximum level, which is two percent of the gross previous year's budget. So that is the one million nine hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So that non-lapsing account stands funded at that level. So thank you to our members of the Board of Finance for their excellent questions, their good dialogue and understanding. And, you know, I've, I've had some dialogue with, um, folks back and forth. And also, uh, to Mr. Shoda for, for his work on that. He's always an advocate of doing the right thing for our students. And in this particular case, I think everyone knows that we're in a, a tough spot, having to fund some things that weren't, that weren't budgeted. So it's, it's a, continues to be a good, a good partnership. And I wanted to make sure that we said that publicly. So, and that was it for me, Mrs. Carmody. Thank you.
Well, and that's, and Sherry, I, I, of course, I'm sure, as always, you were very prepared and did an excellent report. And we appreciate the Finance Board understanding the times that we are going through. So thank you, all of you that were there. And this is Clark for attending.
And I do have to say that Mr. Canell and Mrs. Donello were spot on with answers, questions. And there was really a spirit of cooperation at the meeting, which among all the, uh, the Board of Finance members, it was really, it was a very good dialogue and. And, and I really think Mrs. Donello and Mr. Canel got the message across of what the needs were, and they understood. So it was good.
Well, thank you. Um, moving on, we have Mr. Brown with the Southern High School Citizen in Action Unit, our second reading. Does this call for a motion, Mr. Canel?
Yeah, I'm all set with it.
Okay. So go ahead, Bob.
Yeah. Before I make the motion, I just want to thank some people first. Because again, we mentioned this last time, but the teachers, administrators who develop these units, with everything else going on to spend their summer and other time developing this, and they're sensational when you read the units. I also want to thank Mr. Medancy, doesn't get thanked enough for his work. I mean, look at all the different things we've talked about that he's been involved with. And then I want to thank the committee too, Missy and Terry, both of you for the, your input in our committee work. Thank you. So I move to approve the SHS Citizenship in Action Units and the SHS Science Units as recommended by the Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
A second. Did you second it? Did Missy second it?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Well, I, I just wanted to commend on, on the job of, of that, because certainly the citizenship and action is near and dear to my heart. And there's definitely a couple of things in it that I just wanted to sort of mention, you know, specifically, it talked about the different challenges that we face today. You know, especially the, the, how some want to dissolve certain things like the Electoral College and things like that. I, I think this executed the way that I know that Suddington's going to do it is a very good way of shedding light on both sides of an argument. Especially nowadays where people are so eagerly willing to just shut down the conversation. Nope, you can't be right. Nope, I don't see it that way. You're wrong. And then that's the end of it. So I, I'll, I'll tell you, like, I, I think this is a really good start to something that can potentially teach our kids a lot about, you know, where we started, how things have evolved, and why some of the, the things that our great, 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 great grandfathers did are actually still pertinent and important for today. So this is, this is great stuff. And thank you guys so much for, for putting that together. I, I, again, it was a long read, but it was, it was great. I, I'm very passionate about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're spot on, Joe. It's, we need this more than ever. And I think they will do it right about different perspectives and respect for each other. So thank you.
They are exciting reads. When you read through that, so there's a lot to read, but there is, it's pretty cool stuff to read through. And how, how appropriate is for right now? These are classes I'd love to take right now. And, and Bob, you said that the, the teaching team that put these things together spent up. You, you, you hit it. They, they really worked their, their, their tails off to come up with something that's pertinent. And, and Joey, yeah, you know, being able to see both sides. I mean, my God, there's, nobody sees both sides anymore, and you need to do that. There's got to be a lot more of that if we truly want to have some cooperation and, and get anything accomplished any longer. So great job on, on these things. They're, they're really fantastic.
So we had, we have, we had a motion and we had a second, but we haven't taken a vote, correct?
Correct.
Aye.
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 So we all approve of that. Next, you have Mr. Brown with the Science Units, second reading.
I included that in the motion, actually.
He did.
Oh, he did? I'm sorry.
It was in the motion, yeah.
Yes.
I, I.
I wasn't paying attention. Sorry, Mr. Brown, I missed that. So it's 9B NC. Okay.
Yes.
So that was in the, the motion with.
I did put it in the motion. I mean, I could have separated. I didn't think there'd be a lot of controversy, but.
Are we okay with the way he did that?
I need some politics, Bob. There's lots of controversy.
If you prefer, I'll withdraw the motion and we can spend more time on separating.
Efficiency, efficiency at its best.
We are passing, excuse me, we are passing both, right?
Yeah, we just did pass both.
You know, I don't know where I was for that.
All right, no, it's okay.
You have the next, the job approval of.
Yes. And I have two. Can I combine them?
I'll do whatever you want.
Mr. Medancy's going, yeah? Okay. Move to approve the job description for Network Manager and Associate Athletic Director as presented.
Second.
Uh, any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so they both carry. Go. I think that's it for you, Colleen.
Yep, because the next are just the, the policies and it's the first reading.
Okay, just the first reading. And there was, you know, that, there, I, I know all of you who read through that. There was just so much to read through, and the policy is just, we have so many policies to read through, but pretty impressive when you, I thought, when you read through all of our policies and certainly our, our code of conduct for our students and so forth. Very well done. So a lot of work. So I appreciate all the work all you committee members do. So thank you. I think that.
Mr. Dernowski's not here, so somebody has to.
I'll do it.
Yo, be the big hero. Go ahead.
Move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Are you still there, Steve Medancy?
Yes.
I'm, I'm going to send you an email. I, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions at some point. So look out for it. Thanks, buddy.
Bye, everybody.